You're gonna wash those.
I'm not, no.
You don't want to, you don't want to be.
That's true. Alright, I call an order that regular meeting faces city council Monday, April 13th. Like the recital pledge of allegiance. Allegiance with the flag. To the republic, for which we stand. One nation, one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, merciful. The next item will be the approval of the agenda. And we've got some changes to the agenda now. I really like them. Um, if there's anything else, anybody would like to have changed upon it, please let Eric know. So I'd be looking for approval of the agenda.
We need to remove Pam. She's pulling out of the council, so she has to be removed.
Mayor, we have a, we do have something we need to change on the agenda.
Okay.
Because I just got a, got a note from Diane saying that one of the candidates who had applied for city council Pam was, has removed herself uh, from the, uh, from consideration and so if, if we could include with that motion, you know, a removal of her consideration for, for that position uh, as part of the, part of the agenda.
Okay, um, put under B1A?
Yeah, that would be, it would be, it'd be under B1, yes, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Do we have a motion in the second for any discussion? Go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peters, or Koutal?
Aye.
Jerry Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Is there anybody from the public present that would like to address the council for anything that's not on the agenda?
There's, there's nobody here, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Pay the motion in the second on the consent calendar.
Let's, y'all make a motion to approve the minutes from March 23rd. Uh, the municipal accounts payable with outbreak through beverage.
A second? Okay, got a motion in the second. Under discussion, haven't gone through the checkbook, there is no payment to Stanford Health. There are no further discussions. Go to vote.
Uh, Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. And there is a, uh, payment to breakthrough beverage, I get a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable to breakthrough beverage.
Second. A motion in the second, any discussions? Okay, go to vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is mayor council communication. Does anybody have any input there?
I just want to say I'm happy that the fire department and the police department and the ambulance are doing some fun things around town and keeping things a little lively. Other than their normal jobs.
I, I would echo that, I think. I'd like to also, Eric and staff are opening up the DMV window today and going forward so we can get some of our service back. But I think everybody's gone above and beyond with all the things that we've got going on. Anything else? Okay, you're up, Chris. Tell us all about your update on the street project.
Okay, um, we kind of had our second kickoff, uh, pre-construction meeting for spring construction for phase 381, which is the one that I definitely started, uh, last year. Um, they're planning on Wednesday of this week to, uh, have their saw cutter come in and cut the pavement, um, be ready for the, the removals on the rest of the project. Um, and then they're gonna start with construction, utility construction on the two blocks of, uh, what's the second and third street, those two segments north of Hollitt. Um, and then their grading group is going to be in town, Supus, whether.
This is on, will now be recorded.
With the, um, road restrictions, they're gonna get those, the three or four blocks that they started last fall, get those crap out of here, whatever. Uh, the students, excuse me, the students and weather allows. Um, 381 is, um, is gonna get going here very soon. 382, um, we finally got comments back of the redevelopment. Um, nothing too drastic, a lot of very common boilerplate, um, comments and a few design specific ones that were drafts, but nothing too long in there, so. We're pushing forward with those and, um, pushing to get their approval to send it out for bid. And we'll have them ready, we'll, we'll see what the bidding environment is like, uh, when that happens and, um, you know, we can always reject all bid. We just don't know what's happening, but I'll get everything ready and, uh, we'll know that the option rejected is if it comes back on the payroll order. Any, any number of reasons really, uh, what's going on, so. Whether there's disruptions in the supply chain and contractors that are able to get pipes or something, whatever it may be, but at least we have the plans ready. Um, and then we wrapped up, um, survey of 383 and that will, um, we'll be designing that, um, start designing that in a couple of weeks here. So we had the open house before things really started getting tightened up as far as the social distancing. I'm glad we were able to get that in for 382. Um, so we were able to talk to a lot of property owners and answer some questions, give them easy documents time, so forth. Is each, the downtown stuff is separate from the 18, yeah, 18 or 19.
Uh, just a couple of questions, Chris. One of them, and I had a couple of people asking about it with, uh, the social distancing stuff, that's not gonna affect down there, there's just control by the board, right?
That's, that's our understanding, that's their understanding, um, we're even considered essential actually, our, our offices, just whatever, we're working from home, but our survey crews and anything that supports construction is considered essential still. So they've had a protocol where, you know, they're not gonna be, um, same guy isn't gonna be jumping in on all the different pieces of equipment. Right, one guy, piece of equipment, they have to switch, they kind of have a wipe down procedure. Um, but yeah, otherwise, as, as of right now, their regulation deadline, they're, they're okay to keep working.
Okay, and then my second question, I want, it's, uh, a little early to ask and, but their, their talk is, another, on those sides of the stimulus they're doing, is money for infrastructure. Do you have someone in your office following that and what we need to do in order to get some of that money and for the way it'll work?
Yeah, we keep an eye on that stuff and a lot of the kind of way it works is, uh, the money gets assigned to a federal agency or it's assigned to the state that goes through existing agencies, so. PFA, RRD, the agencies we usually work with, they just have a lot more money to, to play with.
If there's an office, if you're going down that box or, or levy or any more, if it gets more in the grant, that would be crazy.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have anything, Chris? Hey, then the next item is under new business, uh, A1, the question.
Mayor, the, uh, what's, what's gonna happen here is that Shane's gonna cover one and two. Um, and then, and I'll do three and five, and Jeff is gonna do number four. Um, so Shane, it's all yours.
So the discussion was brought up at the open house, um, some members of the church were looking for, uh, they're kind of concerned with parking there, so they ended up parking further to the, to the north on Sixth Street. Um, they use up that block, uh, just north of Roland, between Roland and Harvey. So what they're worried about is having it too congested there, um, during events, um, between Sunday morning and then, um, weddings, funerals, um, anything that goes on there, it gets, it gets pretty busy around that intersection, so. Um, I guess that's what their, what their request is, um, to even it out with what they're doing for width uh, right in front of the church, which is, uh, 36 feet. Um, and widening that out is their request, so, um, it was brought up, so we're bringing this in front of the council for your consideration.
Going to the north of that, is that where?
Yeah, I don't know. What is it at currently, Chris? Is it 32?
Um, it's currently designed for 32, yeah, the, if you went out there right now, it's, uh, 43 feet wide, the hall of Sixth Street is extraordinarily wide right now. And the kind of guidance we've been working on is standardized role with the 52 feet except for the blocks in some schools and churches, we're going to 36. Um, so there's requests and another block in the north of 36.
And that's gonna allow for two-way traffic with Hartfield both sides?
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense to me because that, that could suggest their, especially that intersection role and that the green will help. Make it a little wider.
I think Roland's gonna be a little wider than it is after the project, I think it's gonna gain a couple of feet.
And that'll help too. And how wide is that area, that street, that area now?
Which portion?
The Sixth Street, the north part, is that, is that 40 feet of there also currently?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You want us to make a motion?
Yeah, I got that, that's why they're analyzing if we're gonna approve their request.
I'll make a motion that we honor the request of the St. Mary's Church to increase the width of the street between Harvey and Roland to 36 feet to be the same as what's directly in front of the church, just for that one inch of the block.
I'll send that. Motion in the second, ready discussion? Jerry, you don't vote, go to vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
The request, the motion to approve the request of widening the street. And then a change order, change?
This is the funnest one of the whole thing. So the change order is multi, it's in multiple locations. Um, as far as the background, I don't know if you guys read all the council communication portion of this. Um, but the background was the EDA was looking for, um, the additional, of, uh, the addition of bump outs and widening some sidewalks on that 100 block of Third Street. And, um, they actually came through the design last year to, to have ISG draw that up. Um, it was then brought to the planning commission, um, they kind of approved the plan that's written and then they wanted to incorporate a few trees. Now we separated this out, um, so we can kind of break it apart how we want it, but, um, part of the, the one part of the change order is for, so they'll have to cross Roland and Fourth in order to, um, make some changes for phase 382 to work. And Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, if they just do what's in phase one, 381, they'll actually have to dig into the street twice. So essentially they're moving part of phase 382 into phase 381, which in the end will be a cost savings over the two projects. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, on phase 381, we're kind of digging in the half the intersection to make some, um, connections from the east side and then 382 can be digging in through half the intersection from the west side. We're just helping with that to have 381 carry it all the way through the intersection. Um, to have one floor through their intersection and have, kind of be done with it in one project and then they can take off the intersection as part of 382, so do work or just moving it from one construction contract to the other.
And that'll all fall under that same temporary bond?
Yeah, all part of the same funding that's been approved, um, I mean, the utility work is part of the, the RRD package and then, um, some of the ineligible probably will be, will be from the bond. All right, yeah, I guess your question is temporary bonds, all coming from temporary bonds initially.
It'll be ineligible for part of it and eligible for the other part.
Part of it will be.
Um, then it's moving downtown, so that portion of the change order for that Roland and Fourth is right on one, is 39,001.36. Um, on the 110,000 dollar change order. The bump out project, um, with changing the sidewalks and a little bit of the street width and essentially create more concrete and a few more expensive features to the, to the landscape. Um, that's 70,009.27, um, that cost is without the trees. Um, to add the trees, I know, uh, Chris kind of drew something up and I think it was five trees that would actually look the best, uh, the planning commission wanted, was looking at four on each side. But with the awnings that are currently there and, um, the way everything lays out, to make them look decent, um, they kind of made a drawing and, um, pretty rough drawing, but it's, and they, they decided if they do it through five trees and then like some, uh, bigger planter, um, planters around town, around downtown to fill in where the other trees wouldn't fit, because of the height restrictions. Um, so the extra, to add that extra, the extra trees and landscape part of it, that's another 22,500 estimated. Um, as, as far as that portion, we'd have to look into a little further as far as getting hard numbers, but I don't know if I, is that pretty accurate, Chris?
Right, so this change order was, um, was drafted after we got the direction last fall, um, um, what the planning commission, city council wanted this to look like, which didn't include the trees at that time, but so, um, the numbers are actually from dynamic for the change order and, um, most of them were recovered by unit prices that are already existing from the original bid. I don't think they really had to provide very many unit prices or anything that are, that already exist as part of the bid. And then the, um, the, the trees have come up since then and so we haven't had a chance to get a hard number from downtown now, like kind of our landscape architects, um, estimate for those trees and the infrastructure that's kind of necessary, these are things for you, you kind of have to do a little more to make sure, um, it's gonna succeed, there's more of a planting bed. Um, you don't want, you don't want to plant something in the ground, they have the sidewalk and everything, obviously, it's they're a little more intensive than just popping in there and a football yard or something.
The last discussion on, on that project that I had with anyone was that they, they, the city was not gonna pay the trees, so. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me to put it on trees, we just pay to have some taken out from the electric store. Because they're approaching them into a building. The, uh, the business owner wanted to have vegetation in front of the building and that actually is there, that's not everybody else. Right? Did the trees came back up and had a planning meeting and was this the first I've heard of it in a house form?
Yeah, it was brought up, it was towards the end of the year and then it was last fall, I think. And then it was brought, I brought it to Chris's attention, you know, with this change order, um, kind of to finalize everything and, and what they were looking at, but, um, as far as what the council wants to do, is the recommendation.
It's not recommended we do the trees though. It's council, it's not recommended that we include the trees in this change order. We just wanted you to know, we just wanted you to know that it was there because the planning commission had mentioned it, but staff is not recommending that we do the trees at this time. It's something we could consider, you know, down the road if you wanted to put it on the budget, but right now it's not part of this change order.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a question with bump outs. How many bump outs does this include if we're going all the way down to, to Roland Street? Are there bump outs? Like down by the rank and by the the house? I mean, it's a residence at the end of Roland Street?
Just goes down to this corner.
It's just on the 100 block. It, it, council member, it's just on the 100 block of Third Street and so it's just, would be the corner down here where the Masonic and the multipurpose center are, are, that corner. And then the corner on the end on South and Third, in that corner, yeah, so it's just four bump outs on those, on those two intersections.
Clarification on that.
There's no bump out by the library?
Six, now that I'm thinking.
Yeah, by where the library and the multipurpose center and the, and the, where the old Masonic building, the empty lot there and the tanning place, yes. Yeah, that's one location and the other one is that south, is you go down, you know, a block towards the railroad tracks, by Bonnie and Clyde's, yeah.
So six total.
It'd be six total bump outs, that's right. Six total bump outs, four on the intersection up here and then two on the end by South Street.
Is that what you have drawn in?
Their, their two are rolling as well, they don't, they don't approach the roll, they only, um, pin down on Third Street, that makes sense?
Yes.
Is there a screen?
It's a half a bump out.
Yeah, it's.
So at South Street, going to South North, there are bump outs at South Street, but they don't they don't approach out into South Street, they only pin in on Third Street. And then at the intersection of Morgan and Third, they, they pin in on Morgan and on Third. And then at Roland and Third, they only the south side of the intersection and only pin in on, uh, on Third, not in Roland.
So it's actually eight. It's eight, four of them are full and two of, and four of them are half. Right, yeah.
Well, we're talking paying for build outs in front of residents and the corner by the bank.
And that's something, council member, if you wanted to, to make that change, I think, I think mostly what we're, what we're concerned about from economic development standpoint is, you know, creating some walkability and some public spaces. Um, you know, I, I think the economic development, uh, the EDA was really interested in this because of, you know, how do we revitalize downtown and, uh, and give people an opportunity when they get down there, you know, something to do and so like for example, um, Bonnie and Clyde's could do a cafe on the street, you know, as an example, or if you wanted to build a coffee shop or another restaurant, the same kind of thing. We could do some things at the multipurpose center and the library, you know, where you, uh, might have something out on the corner, you know, a book fair or a, you know, we could do breakfast, you know, out on the corner instead of inside. You know, it's that, it's that kind of thing and being able to use that public space to make it more, you know, walkable. Um, you know, from my perspective, I, I would say that if, if, if you do have concerns about, you know, Roland and Third, that's probably not as critical as the, you know, rest of it, uh, because that's, you know, there's not as much business down there, but, but, but ultimately that's how the change order was, was drawn up. How the design was drawn up, I should say.
Yeah, there, as one at Roland, as one at Roland, it's the south side of the intersection, so there's one on the corner of the bank property and then really making it symmetrical and having the bump out be effective as far as activity and just being symmetrical, um, there's one on the west side of the street, it is, it is a house, yeah.
Because I'm honest, I remember this coming to council and then I remember us discussing it and everything, I remember the conversation about the trees. You know, we're just taking some of the lower star because they're approaching into a, a property owner building and stuff like that. Right now I'm just trying to deal with the sticker shop because I don't remember seeing this whole price, I thought that's what was coming to the board or to the council for more discussion and I know that's what we're having right now. But am I forgetting that there is a step in the middle here somewhere?
Council member.
That we're not to a resolution before?
Council member, I, I think that I understand your concern, it's kind of like, well, all of a sudden we've got 60, 70,000 dollars worth of expenses here and, you know, where is this coming from? I think that what happened is, is that we got backed up against the wall a little bit because if we're going to do this, do this project, we literally have to do it, do the change order now, uh, because, uh, of, of the, the construction and so, you know, we, we don't, it's probably, you're right, something that should have been done, you know, a while ago, um, but unfortunately we're in a situation where, where if we don't do it now, it isn't going to get done at all and it will be much more costly to do it in the future. I was very concerned when we put this together in the first place that, that we wouldn't have a way to pay for it, you know, and when Jeff and Shane and I met and talked about this, I said, what, what are we gonna do? I mean, this is a nice idea, but I don't know how we can afford this. Um, and, um, and so we started, I started digging into some of the, the budget. And, and so we started, I started digging into some of the, the budget numbers and, you know, had some conversations with Jeff about, look, if this is something that the EDA really wants and they, they paid for the design and so it is something that they want, then, you know, we ought to be using EDA dollars to, to pay for that. And there are a couple of line items in the budget that had some pretty substantial dollars in them. They were slated for some construction and improvements out of Broad Acres and, you know, other potential projects that Jeff might have this year. You know, through Jeff and my conversation, and if you want to hear from Jeff, I, he'd probably be happy to talk about it too. He felt that these were projects that probably weren't going to come to fruition and so we left enough money in the budget to complete the Broad Acres project because there's some sewer that still needs to do out there. But, but ultimately there, we're, we literally had $85,000 in those line items that were slated for economic development projects of significance. And, you know, we really felt that this was because of the timing and because of the project and because of, you know, you know, a desire to, to do something downtown, that this was a, a good source of EDA funds to make this happen. And so that's how this occurred and that's where the money is going to come from. It is money that's budgeted this year, so it is not something that is going to cost more money than the budget you've already approved. All we're going to do is move it from one line item to another. And I apologize for bringing this up so quickly like this and asking you to have to make a decision tonight. I wish we'd had an opportunity to talk about it earlier, it just, it just, it just came up quickly because of this contract.
I guess I'd like to hear what projects that we felt were going to happen or not going to happen. I don't want to jeopardize this as a year forward.
Sure, I'll bring Jeff over so he can talk about that.
Thank you.
Some, some of the money that was put together for that was in case the Broad Acres project where, as a lot of you know, the one twin home is up and ready to be moved into and the other one, the groundwork has started this week already. But there's two more lots on the opposite side, the back ends of those two that are going up now already. What we put some money together for in the budget for 2020 was if that went faster than we even, you know, even expected and we wanted to move, whether it was into another place close to Broad Acres. I don't really want to talk about where, you know, we plan on going from there, but that's, that's not going to come into fruition this year. If we can get the two lots sold that are left out there, we'll be making good projects. So that's where the, where some of the money that Eric is talking about is coming from, that was set aside already for the EDA budget. There is still some, some sewer and water and some infrastructure costs that are, that are going to, that are going to take place out there, but though that, those monies will be left in the budget to pay for that. Isn't that correct, Eric?
That's correct, yeah. So the short, short answer is, is that I, you know, we, we don't think that there's going to be another project that we could spend this money on this year because the things that Jeff might, thought might happen aren't happening as quickly as we thought.
If that explains it a little better, thank you.
I've got a couple things. I know we talked last fall about the driveway approach and a part of the Masonic building. Is that included in this change order or are we not seeing it or are we not going to do it?
It's, it's included, Mayor.
Okay. Then the other thing I brought up. I want an EDA to make the motion to have the EDA pay the, the, uh, engineering of this bump out stuff. One caveat to that motion and there were businesses on Third Street on the border at the time, was that the property owners that are benefiting from the bump outs were going to be assessed a little more than what they normally would assess. So I don't want that to get lost in the confusion and, uh, not get put in there. I'm not talking about assessing all of that, that's just, that doesn't make good sense either. But somebody, a block up is not getting any particular benefit from this additional cost. Shouldn't be paying as much as those that are going to get that out of it. Or you need to keep that line in the, to the assessment.
Uh, Mayor, I think in particular wasn't that, um, some of them are longer than others. Like for example, Bonnie and Clyde's, um, it stretches further north.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if, if you want, they're not going to be the same on any of them and unfortunately the city's going to wind up three. The whole body might get one and then the BKK standing down there and then the bank. And I don't, to a property owner who's getting one just for aesthetics for the city. And I think that should pop there for assessment, but that's just my opinion. This needs to be taken into account, that was part of the original attempt of motions. If they wanted it, it was going to cost more.
But have we asked those property owners if they want it? So we know Bonnie and Clyde want to because it's going to potentially offer them something, but is it fair for like?
The planning commission assured me that they talked all in their own favor.
When the planning commission talked to everybody, we were talking about the, the, whether it was going to be a one-way, whether it was going to be diagonal, um, diagonal parking or there was going to be no parking on the one side or whatever. You know what, I'd have to go back to that, that, that meeting, Tony, but I believe the first time that that came up between the city council or the planning commission about charging that monies out to the, to the owners of the buildings where they were going to be in front of was when it was brought up at a city council meeting. That, that was the, I believe that was the first, I wouldn't stake my life on it, but that, I believe that was the first time that that piece of it was brought up.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think, you know, with all due respect, I think we're missing the point a little bit of, of we're trying to do something with the main street up here to keep the vitality going and, and bring people in, you know, by, by doing something to make the aesthetics look better, to make it, people.
I agree and I'm not saying assess more than, you know, the entire cost, but it should be, if you're going to assess property owner A, one end of the street, if you don't benefit from it, five grand, then property B benefiting from it should be $500, just as thrown out numbers. You know, it's not going to be anything, it's going to make one sue against them, idiot. And if they want to feel the assessment, they have that option.
So, so Mayor, our recommendation is, is that, is that the council approve the change order that would include the accelerating Roland and Fourth into the current phase as well as the bump outs for a total cost of $110,063.66. And that did not include the trees. And that's something, of course, we could always consider in the future if we wanted to, but, but it does not include the trees at this time. And so, you know, that, that concludes our, our presentation on this matter, unless you have any more questions.
If I could know quick, um, this is with our D and we haven't received any comments on it. We really believe they're not going to approve it, but as we often do, if you guys are going to approve it, I would recommend approving contingent upon rural development approval. So that we don't have to wait two weeks, say, from tomorrow and wait two, three weeks.
Yep.
Glenn, at this time, I would ask a motion recommending 2020-19 to be a, a change order to be approved pending our D's blessing.
I'll second it. They've got a motion to second for the discussion.
Go to vote.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn past resolution 2020-19. Next slide is the 2021 budget process.
Thank you, Mayor. This, I, I can make this really brief. This is into your all's first budget. I, I spent some time, you know, as my kind of acclimating myself to, you know, Minnesota and the process here for, that the state outlines for us and then our charter in addition to that has some specific things in it that we're required to do, you know, with the budget. Namely that it, it requires budget estimates given to council at the first meeting in August. So when I started looking at that process, I realized that, oh my gosh, if we're going to give you budget estimates by the first week of August, we need to get going on this. And so I had a conversation with, with Peggy and Shane about what had been done in the past and, and started thinking about what a schedule would look like. What you have in front of you is kind of a budget schedule that kind of starts with tonight, gives you an idea when the staff is going to start putting it together. It basically takes all the statutory requirements like when you need to adopt the budget, the truth and tax, taxation, public meetings, you know, what the charter says about us meeting and then backs it up to kind of where we are now. What I'm asking for is a couple of things that might be slightly different than what you've done in the past, but I think that they're good things. One is, is that, is to have a workshop ahead of time, which would be a public meeting, of course, to discuss kind of what, what your priorities are for the budget, you know, so we can get input from you, ultimately as the adopters of the budget. I have that in the schedule for June 1st. The reason why I decided on June 1st is because June has three Mondays in it and so we'd have a gap, an extra long gap in there and so we, we, we'd be adding an extra meeting that we don't normally have, but, but, but it would be in a month that, that we would have the extra money to do it. And the second thing is, is that I would, at that meeting, I would like to have a discussion and I, some of you I've had an opportunity to talk to, but the rest of you also, as well as the new council member you appoint tonight, kind of discussing what your personal priorities are, you know, as far as what the city should be spending its money on. And then maybe adopt, you know, a handful of goals that the city council, that we can use to help formulate the budget, whatever those goals are. You know, the budget is a plan, it should be reflective of your priorities as a city council. Obviously there are some things that we have to do, but, but, but at the end of the day, it should be reflective of your priorities as, as, as the elected body of, of the city of Tracy. And so that's kind of my background on this. And what I, what I would ask for is, is a quick motion to, you know, adopt the schedule and, and, you know, direct me to, you know, develop the budget based on a set of your priorities that you tell me in that, in that June meeting and beyond. And with that, I would ask, entertain any questions.
No, I'm not. I think you got it laid out really well. I've got no problem with that at all. I think it's a good idea. I understand, I'm sure it'll prove it.
I'll make the motion to adopt the 2021 budget schedule.
Second.
Got a motion to second for the discussion? Turn it on, go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
2021 budget is going to be half. That's why I had it as a plural on the plural ramp up there. Yeah.
Hello, um, just, I just want to talk a little bit to the, to the council here tonight about the suspension, the possibility of a suspension of Tracy revolving loan funds, just the loans at the request of a couple of businesses. With all the calls that I've been on, the countless hours in the last two weeks of calls, I've been on a lot of cities and, and I do mean a lot of cities, I don't even think it's worth counting the number that are doing this. Whether it's the cities or the EDAs, they're actually giving the option to people who owe for revolving loan funds, they're actually giving them a few months reprieve on the, on the payments. I, I want to, I want to make sure that everybody knows on the call here, this isn't a, we're giving this money up, it's actually money that's going to be pushed to the back of the loan. So if someone had, example, if somebody had two years left to pay on their loan, they would, it would be stretched out to two years and three months. We've talked, Eric and I have talked to Peggy and it won't be a problem taking care of the interest part of it and the principal part of it and pushing it to the, to the end of it. A, there's, there was, with the examples that I've seen, it's been anywhere from three months to six months. And the one that I liked the most that I showed to Eric and we kind of, that's the one that's sitting in front of you is with the, the possibility of a three-month with an application, but then it could be, depending on how everything goes with this COVID-19 situation, it might be able to be pushed to six months. Again, I just, just want the, the budget implications of it. It could be if everybody took advantage of this, I believe there's only seven of them that have loans with the EDA, it would come out to about $2,600 a month. But I don't, I, I, I would bet it's going to be right around that $1,000 a month is what we're going to get asked by the, by the businesses. It, it is my recommendation that we go ahead and do this, not just, it was something that, that Eric and I had actually talked about and then actually it was the next day when I was on a, a, it was a national EDA conference call where it was brought up and some of the specifics were brought into it of what some of the cities, both large and small, are doing. So I guess what I'm looking for tonight is, I would like approval from you not only to implement this situation, but I would also like approval from you that I can make that decision at this office with just Eric and I making that decision as, as opposed to me going to the EDA board. One last thing, when I sent the information out to not only the EDA and the city council, out of the responses that I got back were all in favor of this, you know, we didn't make any decisions, but I just wanted to see what the, what the thoughts were on, on what I put forward. So that, that's what I would want, it'd be two point, or two parts. I would like to be able to implement the program itself and then I would also like to be able to make the decisions right here with Eric and I looking at each situation individually.
I think it's a good idea, I think it'll help out. Some of our businesses now, I've fully supported it. I've fully supported that the implementation being handled by both Jeff and Eric.
If you want it extended to six months, are you just going to come back for requests again on that or?
Dave, the, the application is so simple, I sent that out to you also. I mean, it is actually, it, I sent it to somebody today just as practice and it, it was filled out and sent back to me within a couple of minutes, it was that simple. That was one of the things that, that city EDAs, the national area county EDAs, they're trying to make this as simple as possible, just like some of the other federal and state programs that are available right now for businesses. So yes, to answer your question, yes, David, I would want that to, to come back after three-month period and then reapply, which would be just another three-minute application.
Don't you agree?
I have a motion to approve the program.
I think the motion to approve the program.
I'll second it. A motion to second any discussion? Go to vote.
Is this, can I, before you vote, is this, is this going to cover all six months of it if possible? If it goes past that six months, then I'll bring it back to you. if possible, if it goes past that six months, then I'll bring it back to you, you know, later down the road, which would be September or October, which I don't see that happening.
Yeah.
Okay. Those decisions are made by, case by case, by Eric and I right here at the office, and...
Okay, so have a vote on approval of the referral program?
Dave Teigs. Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Loan for program, EDA has been approved, now I'd say emotional, allowing Jeff and Eric to introduce the program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion to second, any discussion?
Go to vote.
Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to, uh, if I could, Mayor, please, I just want to give you a real quick update, um, again, I, I had mentioned a little earlier, the, the, the last couple of weeks have been, um, Eric and I here a couple of weeks ago made the decision that, that it is, it's, it's the utmost importance for us to keep the businesses that we have here in the city of Tracy, so that's what my concentration has been over the past two weeks, whether it's calls and trying to get people to sign up for all the, the available federal loans, the federal grants, the state things that are going on, it's, uh, I, I believe, and this is a, a rough guesstimate, and I don't wanna, you know, bring up any who's applied for it or who hasn't applied for it, I've recommended to all businesses within the city of Tracy, and the newspaper did last week in an article, but I believe we will have twenty-plus, um, loans that will be, some of them forgiven, and some of them are low-interest loans here in the city of Tracy alone, for the PPP, it's just a payroll protection plan, and then there's an EIDL, it's just an emergency loan for some of the businesses that are struggling right now, and some of them that are gonna be closed, it's not just the restaurants and, and service industry, but there's a lot of people that have been affected by this COVID-nineteen, so, um, anybody on, you know, call here listening tonight, if you know of anybody that hasn't applied for that, please give them my number, have them call me, I can walk them through the program, I, I dream about it every night, so I can walk anybody through it, um, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, you're doing a great job on that. Okay, that item is, mold is best mitigation?
Yes, Jeff is doing a great job on that, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's been an important mission, you know, for the city in the last few weeks, um, so let me tell you a bit about this, uh, this, this issue, um, it's, it's kind of started, uh, before I got here a little bit, um, we've, we've known that there's been a bit of a mold problem at the multipurpose center and senior center, um, we also knew, because there were some inspections after the 2018 flood, that we had some issues with water in the basement here as well, and so we made some requests to FEMA on, uh, you know, a project to, to mitigate those problems, and, so I said, uh, I, I, I told Shane that, well, since we're gonna be shut down here for a few weeks to the public, let's, let's get an inspection and see what we can find, uh, if we've got a problem, and we actually found more of a problem than we thought we had originally, um, and so, uh, Chris, or, uh, Brian Perry, uh, came out and took a look, uh, at both the basement here in this building, as well as the basement of this multipurpose center, uh, found extensive damage, uh, from mold in, in both cases, uh, the environmental reports, I think, are included in your packet, uh, both in the air tests, as well as, um, uh, through visual inspection, you can see mold growing, what he told me was that, it's not even just your garden variety mold, it's also that black mold that's really, you know, dangerous to people's health, um, while we were doing the visual inspection here at city hall, we also had some concerns because there was some water, uh, 'cause it was right after a rain, there was water sitting on the floor in the, uh, the ladies locker room, uh, downstairs, and, um, it had broken up the tiles, and I said, oh geez, you know, let's take a look at those tiles too, 'cause they'd never been tested, and we found out that there was asbestos tiles in the basement, which are fine as long as they're fixed, but because the water has broken them up into pieces, uh, we have to fix that problem too, um, and then when we looked at the senior center, uh, we also had the asbestos tile broken up on the floor of the senior center too, and so we felt that this was an important health and safety issue, um, as many members of the public as we have coming in and out of this, these buildings, in addition to the, obviously, the staff that's here and having to work here all the time, that this was something we needed to get cleaned up, and because, um, we don't have people in and out of these buildings right now, uh, because of the shutdown from the COVID-nineteen epidemic, uh, we felt that it was a good time to do it, uh, rather than waiting, 'cause it's gonna, it's gonna involve, you know, workers coming in and out of here fairly extensively for a few days, um, we didn't have enough money in the building maintenance budgets for both of these projects, and so we had to find some money from somewhere else in the budget, so this doesn't cost us anymore, um, we're just moving it from one line item to the next, um, what I did was, is that I, the cost is, uh, for these two projects is twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars, uh, that will cover both, we're hoping that we can get some FEMA money still from this, uh, because we already submitted these projects, but this assumes that we don't get any FEMA money, 'cause, you know, we can't count on any FEMA money, as we've learned in the past, um, and, um, essentially, what I did was, is I said, you know, given this COVID-nineteen situation, I don't know what's gonna happen with the pool this summer, 'cause it's currently closed, and we added a twenty-thousand dollars slated for, uh, a repair of the boiler, uh, for the pool heater this summer, and so we're moving money out of that line item, uh, to cover this, um, and, uh, if the pool opens this summer, well, then we can make a decision if we wanna try to find some money to fix that, or maybe we just go with cold water this summer, um, but, but ultimately, that's, that's what this project is all about, um, if you approve this tonight, they'll start tomorrow, um, so, uh, we're, we're ready to go on this project, and, uh, you know, with that, that's the background on this, and, uh, you know, would ask for your approval, there is a resolution because it's budgetary, and you can see the transfers in that resolution in terms of where we're transferring it to and from, um, and that's resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-one, and so, uh, with, uh, with that, that's my presentation, would ask for your approval of, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-one.
Do you think they ought to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-one.
I'll second that.
A motion to second, any discussion?
Hey, here you are, go to vote.
Jones.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
We got some feedback on yours, Matt.
Is it better?
It's better.
That's a lot better. For the, for the, for the motion twenty-twenty, resolution twenty-twenty-one, for transfer funds and approval, the next item is, uh, appointment of a council member, first item to consider is one of the applicants that was drawn herself, that's leading to one. You require a motion to accept the retraction application, so, except the council, if they want to appoint.
George Whitehead, the position.
I think George would make a, a good candidate, a good option, you know, he's stepped up hard to be on some of the committees, he's come to a, quite a few of the council meetings in the past, we had open meetings at that time, while they're still open, but, but people can come in, in people, so I think he showed interest, and if he's willing to start out with this appointment, hey, it's all that who and I here was from appointment, so I think we just get George on the same plan as us. So, that means that I'll make a motion that we accept George as a council person to fill that opening.
Jerry, can you include, can you, can you include the motion to, to go through January, what, first name in January, what's in January?
Question in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, but it's...
It's, it's the eleven.
Yeah, it's the resolution.
Yep, you could just include that in your motion, Jerry, that'd be great, so there's no question as to how long this term goes.
I saw my motion, and I can repeat the whole thing, or do I just add to fill the position through January thirteenth?
January eleventh.
January eleventh.
Yep, thank you.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Go to vote.
Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
The resolution twenty-three dash eighteen points, George Whitehead, to the city council, requires January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one.
And that's he will be up for election this November.
Right.
Right.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, the assessment for the improvements to the property to the hospital.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so the hospice in Murray County owns the lot adjacent, I believe, to the northwest of Sanford, they've bought that property, a few years ago, their original intent was to build a facility for hospice there, and in, as part of that, they approached the city, have the city make some improvements to the property, mainly extension of the sanitary and sewer lines to extend that property, the city made those expenses, or made those improvements, hospice in Murray County agreed to pay those expenses and costs, and waive any appeals assessments regulations, that's what's closing the hacker, should be closed your package, they signed that in May two thousand seventeen, they agreed to pay up to sixty thousand dollars of those costs to be assessed to the property, it's my understanding now that that plan has changed, they no longer intend to build a facility there, however, we have not yet assessed those costs, so it's intended for the city to organize and go through the process of adapting and assessing those costs to the property finally, that's what the resolution provides, the cost for sixty-one thousand five hundred forty-six dollars agreement provides that the cost of assessment cannot exceed sixty thousand dollars, that is why the sixty thousand dollar amount is included in the resolution, so I am advising the council to approve and pass that resolution and have those costs assessed to the property, I know Eric has been in discussion with hospice, and they are possibly interested in paying those assessments in a very short period of time after the, the city council assessed those costs, so hopefully it's something that's paid in shorter, but if not, it will be assessed in place of the company tax.
Thanks for having me, Mr. President, but I'd like to say a motion then to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, second, any discussion?
Go to vote.
Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
That's all, there's any agenda items, again, I'd like to thank all the city staff and employees, all departments, for working through this world that we all have to live in this time, the lights at the end of the tunnel will get around that corner soon, so, like to thank you all, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to second, any discussion?
Go to vote.
Jones.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
I will leave you to adjourn. I will stop by in the morning.